Good morning, and welcome to the Wednesday, October 11th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn. Vice Chair Waymire.
President.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one innocent and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this opportunity today to lead, to stand, Lord, in your wisdom and your holiness, and pray that we would just, this body would be blessed by your Spirit and blessed by your presence. We pray that as they make decisions that affect people, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, insight, and also trust in what you have bestowed upon them and how you lead them. We seek you and ask for the best for where we live. Help us to be good stewards of this space we occupy. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. I should have said Chris McFadden from the Church Street Wednesday.
All right. Correspondence and organizational business, nothing today. All right, public comment?
We have two.
All right. Citizen desiring to speak on an item on the gentleman issues at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Kim?
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to just briefly bring something for you guys this morning. So I am here representing the Franklin County Society for Celebrating and Honoring Veterans, which is the old Veterans Day Parade Committee. We've just rebranded ourselves, and that is our new name. We are now a 501(c)(3) organization. We just got that information about a month ago or so. We received word that we, that had been accepted, and everything's gone through. I believe Buck Bradley, who is our president, sent you guys an email with a request in it. And so we thought we would just come today to kind of just bring that before you again and possibly get this rolling, I guess is the way to say it. So I am Kim Bearclo, and I'm the vice president. We have Derek Larkum, who's our secretary and IT guy. Ray Schumate is our treasurer, and Sherry Wright, who is here today, is our at-large member on the board. So what we are wanting to do is have permission to beautify around the memorial itself. I have pictures on my laptop if you'd like to see them, or you're welcome to drive by and just to get out and kind of look and see. It's really not that good-looking when you drive by, and we feel like it should be. It is our war memorial, and so we feel like it should reflect that, you know, it looks like it's cared for and that there's concern for our veterans and the names on those wall, on that wall. So we have contacted Wet Lilies here in town, and they have said that they would provide, at no cost to anybody, they would beautify around the flagpole for us so that that looks really nice, and they will keep that up for us, again, at no cost to us. They're just willing to do that for us. And then we would like to find someone local to come in and do some of the trimming of the bushes, and I don't know if they're actually trees, I'm not sure what they're supposed to be, around the actual wall. But if you go by and look, or you're welcome to look at my laptop pictures, it's really overgrown, and it looks just not pretty at all. And so we are just wanting to be able to do that before the parade, which is on November 11th on Veterans Day this year. The other thing, you know, we're really, we're trying lots of new things with this committee to honor our veterans year-round. One of those things, if you haven't gone down Main Street yet to check, but we have some of our banners up now. The city has put those up for us that has the veteran on one side with their picture, their name, their rank, and on the other side it just has like an American flag kind of thing. They look really, really nice, really nice. And the city's not done putting those up. We have several more to go up, and we're leaving those up through the Veterans Day Parade. So as we put those up, as we put the yellow ribbons up, as we put the flags up, which we're going to do November 4th, that's our day to get all that set up, we just would like the memorial to reflect whatever, everything else we're trying to do. And right now, it just, it doesn't. It looks pretty sad. And so we are just asking your permission, since that's county space, that we can move forward and do that, and then also be able to do that every year without coming and having to present every year. It's just kind of a blanket, yes, you can maintain that without coming and getting permission every time. If you want to check out our website, it's at FranklinCountyHonors.org, and on there is information about us, upcoming things, ways you can volunteer. You can sign up to do that, especially as it gets closer to the parade. We always need volunteers for that. But again, what we're asking for is just your permission to be able to beautify that space and reflect honoring those veterans' names that are on that wall. And if you have driven through other, especially small towns, it seems like, their memorials are very well taken care of. Their bushes are nice. There's usually flowers, whatever. And we would just like ours to kind of be on that level, instead of just a wall with a flagpole and then nothing else. So that's, that's really our request of the committee today.
We actually talked about this, was it last week or two weeks ago? Anyway, we were just going to coordinate with our buildings and ground person.
Okay.
But I don't think that we have a problem with it. Do we need to still talk to Brandon, or do we just tell them?
Well, yeah, I think we need to. If it's what the four of you want, we need to coordinate with Brandon, and I, I don't know about, I mean, somebody needs to know every year that you guys are.
Yeah, that's really permission.
Yeah.
Biggest fear too, maybe, that what's beautiful to one person is not beautiful to the other. We don't want to end up with pink flamingos and yard gnomes, right? I know, it sounds ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that kind of the footprint doesn't grow because we do, well, for one thing, there's a lot of things underground there you might not think about, but also a lot of other interests.
And then we're not.
On the lawn than just that.
Yeah, and again, we're not asking for anything like major construction. It's just basically around the flagpole and just making sure the bushes are trimmed away from the wall, so.
Yeah, we get that. We just don't want to, we just want to make sure, like Derek says, there's still coordination with everything else that goes on around there.
So I was thinking that we had a consensus, but did do, yeah.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. So everything at this point, the bushes and the flowers? I mean, I think the flowers was kind of an ongoing thing, and I guess we'll let you know who we have a problem with what's going in there. But I think, yeah, that's not, and, and, yeah. You might just give us somebody a heads up, and we can contact the building.
Yeah. Why don't you just, I did not get an email from the gentleman that you, so if you would give me your, or somebody's contact info, I'll put you in touch with our maintenance director.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you for.
All right, thank you.
All right, our consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, we have one more. All right. Yeah, name and address.
Okay, yeah, I've not done this. Name, Stan Schisler, 520 South Cedar. Four scores and seven years ago. Out at the County Landfield, they have an area that people take their leaves and, and ground clippings, and that has accumulated for 100 years. And a lot of us gardeners go out and shovel it and put it in our pickups and take it home with us. He pushed all this up into a couple piles, and I said, is there, is there a chance that this isn't going to be gone? He said, yeah, we're going to put it on top of our trash when we get to that point. He said, we've got a big mound of clay dirt that we usually use off of it, but we're going to do that. No, I thought, what a waste, because it's taken, this is called leaf mold, which is perfect for gardeners. And not to compare, but Lawrence has that for their people to come in, a public to come in and use off of it. That's my observation. So I don't know if there's a way to keep them from using that good stuff, and, and I would volunteer time, or I've got a CDL. I, I could learn to use a piece of equipment if they need someone to, to actually take care of that the way that Lawrence does, because for environmental thing, a lot of us around here.
The whole point of that compost heap was originally that waste that's in there has to be sealed with an impermeable layer, and that's the clay. But on top of that, we have to have something that grass can grow on to hold it tight.
Okay.
And that was the, we're short on black dirt, on, on growing media.
Okay.
And that was, the whole point was to try and produce some of that ourselves, because like you said, good dirt's hard to find. Good, but there'll still be, no matter where it is, there, there'll still be a compost heap somewhere. And I mean, no more than you guys, you're not taking it out and selling it.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's going to have any trouble with you continuing to do that. The location just may change, because it's, you know, as that thing grows, we gotta, we gotta move around the tipping area.
Okay.
That's probably all it is, but it'll still.
I just thought it's a shame if, if we don't have that available.
Yeah, but like you say, it is some good stuff, so we, we need it to try.
It is good stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
I was wondering what they were doing, David, with all that dirt that they're digging out of all those holes that they're putting the new fiber in. There, I mean, there was mounds of dirt that they're putting in a, in a dump truck yesterday, and I was like, I wonder what they're doing with that. I'm like, is there going to be a lot of it?
Highland.
What?
Big Highland Cemetery, dirt, extra dirt.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I think that's where they're taking it.
Going to be a lot of dirt, so you might just find out if they got extra dirt available. Awesome, all right. Now we're going to move on to our consent agenda. The only thing on our consent agenda today is the minutes from the meeting on October 4th. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved. Done.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. And the only item of business we have today is to discuss and review the Franklin County EMS second quarter 2023 reports, and consider the approval of the second quarter 2023 adjustments and the second quarter 2023 collections. Kristi Eiliger.
Hello, good morning. So I'm going to start off just with our, our second quarter of 2023 report. The call volume for this quarter was only 838 calls. As you can see from the paperwork that I did provide you, that shows that we're down at the end of the second quarter, over 300 calls from where we were the previous year. This is not just a problem for Franklin County EMS, but it's a problem that the whole state is experiencing with lower call volumes. Wouldn't necessarily say it's a problem, it's a blessing. Nobody wants to call an ambulance, but it's gotten to the point where we have bi-weekly service director meetings with the Board of EMS, and they are now including call data and call volumes in that as well. So what we're seeing is, is not unique to Franklin County. Overall, we did bring in a little over $240,000 in revenue. That still is going to put us short for, for revenue for, for 2023. Did see, though, some heightened increase in returns, so we're on the right path.
It's not like we can advertise for more.
Well, it's.
Maybe let's run.
Right, nobody, it's, it, it's a blessing that we're there when they need us, but it's, it's a shame that we even have to go. As far as adjustments, we had a little over 74,000 in adjustments. And again, that is just the contractual agreements between insurance providers and Medicare of what we have to write off. And then as far as what was sent to collections, you can see we sent $11,425 to Midwest Collections and then the Kansas Set Off Program, $18,406.33. And I have both of these to sign, that I'll get to you in just a minute. So the actual data that we have, this is the first time using the new software that I've been able to pull data, and I'm quite excited to share it because we, we found some things that were unexpected to us as well. The first page, I'm able to give you the second quarter runs by day of the week. Surprisingly, we found that Tuesday was our busiest day of the week, and Friday was our least busy day of the week. Runs by hour of the day, again, this, this trend consistently stays the same as for about the past five years. You can see that peak time is between 8:00 in the morning and about 9:00 o'clock at night. I do have another spreadsheet that is the runs by county, so you can see the overwhelming majority of calls were in Franklin County, but we did mutual aid into Osage County twice, into Miami County three times, once in Johnson County, and three times into Douglas County in this quarter. Ottawa South still continues to be our largest zone or district that we are picking up our patients, and then followed by Ottawa North and Advent Health, and that's consistent with data that we've had in the past as well. Then we do have runs by destination. Majority of our patients are going to Advent Health Ottawa, followed then by Alatha Medical Center. The next one that I have, this one's new as well, and this is just runs by response request. The majority of our calls are 911 calls to the scene. Then you can see that's followed by inter-facility transport, and you'll notice another label on there that says medical transport. The difference between a medical transport and an inter-facility transport, for an inter-facility, we're going from hospital to hospital. With a medical transport, we would be picking somebody up at the hospital and either taking them back to a nursing home or their house. We most often do that in the case that somebody is going home on hospice or they're actually bed confined. And we did have, in this time too, one person that flagged us down. We have our also runs by response disposition, which this one, again, is, is another new piece of data that I'm able to provide you. You can see that the majority of our patients were treated and transported by our ambulance service. And then we do have, of course, as the community ages, there's a lot of falls, so we tend to go and help people up, and they do not want to be transported. So we do have our refusal data on there as well. And then sometimes we get canceled. You can see that's the, the third largest run by response. Average miles to destination, this one was an interesting one too, that's also new. You can see that in April, it was a little bit over 15 miles to get to our destination, with the longest destination being 70 miles, and that would have been on a transfer, that we had to take somebody to a hospital that far away. May was 16.66 miles, with our maximum miles being 56 miles. In June, it was 15.74, with a maximum traveled of 65 miles.
So you send that to a call and then back to a hospital?
So that is just from the scene of the call to the hospital.
Wherever you.
Yes.
So that's not round trip, that's one way?
That is, that is one way, yes, ma'am. I'm also able to provide you some time summaries now as well too, and I think that that, that data is interesting. As you can see, from the time that we are dispatched to the time that we are en route is considerably under two minutes. The state of Kansas says you have to do it in five, and at least last year, they told us we had one of the best responses in the state. And the data is consistent with last year, so I would see that that would hold up true again. It takes us between, or an average of about seven minutes to arrive on the scene of a call. We're on scene for typically less than 20 minutes. Takes about 20 minutes to transport. And then again, it takes about 20 minutes to clear the hospital. So putting all of that data together, from the time that we're dispatched to the time we clear a call, on average, it's between 50 minutes and an hour for an ambulance run.
And you have to decon the truck every time, don't you?
Yes, we do. We have to clean it and then restock it, and that, that data is not included in this because we do that back at the station or at the hospital, so. I also was able to find you data on our range of patients in, in years. You do see that there's a column that says not applicable. Well, that's going to be for our standbys. So we still have to report the data, but obviously, nobody has an age on those. But most of our patients are between the ages of 70 and 79. And then the runs by service level, this one is not new. However, I was able to break it down for our advanced life support providers now, whether that be a paramedic-level provider or an advanced EMT. So you can see the breakdown now, whereas before it was just an ALS level call. Again, ALS calls significantly outpace our basic life support calls. And then the overlapping calls, this is the one that we had for move-ups and status zeros. Our new software actually terms it overlapping calls. So I would prefer to stick with that, since it comes up with a report for it. In 2022, we had 96 move-ups in the second quarter, whereas in 2023, we only had 42. In the same timeframe, we had 28 times we were at status zero, and in 2023, we had 21. And then I do have another one that talks about the times that we were at system status. In April, we spent 70 minutes in system status, so this is the time that both of the, or all three of our trucks are out, when we don't have any coverage for the county, which equated to 0.16% of the time. In May, it was 236 minutes that we were at system status, and that was about half a percent of the time we spent at system status. And in June, 125 minutes, and that was about 30, or 0.30% of the time. And that is, that is all I have as far as reports, but I am happy to answer questions.
It was very obvious before I even got a chance to ask you the question that this is so much more detailed than before, and I was going to ask if it had to do with our new system.
Yes, it does. All of this data, I was able to, I could run a report at the end of the month, and the report, it takes a little bit to generate it, but when I say a little bit, five minutes. So it's, it's much more timely and, I think, effective versus having to wait for all of this information to be added into our billing system and then pull the data out of billing. This is directly inputted from our patient care reports. This is the same data that goes to the National EMS Information System as, as well as the state.
Oh, when he's talking about Tuesday and Friday, is that over the last quarter?
That was just for the second quarter of 2023.
Well, that could be.
Yes.
Back and forth.
It could be. It'll be interesting to watch that.
Because that's an odd, Tuesday would be an odd, be the last day, most people would think. I think either Monday or Friday or on the weekend.
Although when you look at it, they're all like the 13, 14, 15%, so I mean, it's not a lot of difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
We found it interesting as well.
I, I can just see our new software. You and David Lee just love these because, but, but when you have numbers you can look at like that, you can find efficiencies and things that, you know, what we need to do to improve.
Right.
So it's great to have these good numbers.
Yes.
Awesome. All right, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we do need to make a motion to approve, if, if it's affirmative, to approve the second quarter 2023 adjustments and the second quarter 2023 collections.
Motion to approve?
Go ahead. Somebody.
We got a second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get those signed for you. All right, that moves us on to staff reports.
Thanks, Ian. Last week, Rod and Don went on a fence viewing, and they gave me their findings. I've got a letter prepared, but before I send that, I need the board to vote to allow the two of them to effectively speak on behalf of the entire board. So I just need a motion and a second to that effect.
Of course, we can't send more than two out because that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, so. Make a motion to approve their fence viewing report.
Need a second. Oh.
Yes, one of us, yeah. Second.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who.
I guess I get that. All right.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
We've talked off and on about JDC expenses. Wanted to give you an update on where we're at thus far in '23. So through the month of August, we have spent a little bit over $36,000 on farmouts. And when you consider that our prior JDC budget was over $600,000, we'll, we won't hit this number, but we're on pace for about $54,000 in farmout costs, and I, I don't think we'll get close to that, but that just shows you the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being saved. I mean, an expensive month for us in farmouts, and we've done this several times. It's 10 or 11 grand. But even if we did that every single month, you're still saving about $500,000 probably over where we were at. So remains a good financial decision, and our trend is going even lower, to be real honest. I mean, Brandon Jones, and, and he would clearly know he was right about just we're incarcerating fewer and fewer juveniles, so. Would have been last week, I believe, Janet and I and Brandon talk about the Veterans Memorial. We walked the courthouse lawn, so we've been talking about bringing a landscape architect or getting bids for that, just to see what it's going to cost and, and irrigate, to do landscaping. So we just walked the lawn to kind of start brainstorming ideas on. We didn't talk about the Vet Memorial specifically, but certainly a lot of areas right around the courthouse, out by the sidewalk, so it's something that we've got Brandon's attention on, and, and he's looking up folks that we believe could design the whole thing and potentially construct it as well, so that's, that's in the works. A couple of you have expressed the desire, one primarily, to have, to attend the occasional department head meeting, where I, back before you guys had an administrator, I think you met with department heads pretty frequently, and it made sense then because you were in charge of operations. We have stopped doing that because you've got an administrator now primarily, but I don't have an issue doing this once, maybe twice a year. So I have let the department heads know that you're going to prepare just brief reports to update you. You don't have to attend if you don't believe that it would be a, a good use of your time, but we wanted to offer that to you. Haven't set a date yet, but I am thinking the week, not next week, but the week after. So it would be the week of the 23rd. I'm thinking probably the 25th or the 26th, that would be that Wednesday or Thursday, if.
Are you still going to be gone, and do you care?
I don't care.
I don't care.
When do you have them in the morning?
It, it varies. We typically have a lunch, and that's what I would intend to do here, is provide lunch, and we would just sit down and it'd just be, I mean, I know, Don and Cole, you've been to these, we would just give a brief updates on what's going on in each department. So it'd take about an hour.
On Wednesday the 25th, I have a meeting in Topeka at noon, so the 26th was, for me, would work better.
26th, Don, do you think you can?
Thursday to the 26th.
The 26th?
Yeah.
I was glad we got away from doing them so often, it wasn't a good use of time, it wasn't a good use of resources, because there's a huge dollar about if you figured out what it costs for everybody to sit around that table and kind of give a, you know, all swell report every month. There was, it wasn't a good use of money, and I'm glad we don't do that anymore, so.
It's something that I wouldn't want to, but I wouldn't mind doing it once a year.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll plan on October 26th. We'll have a, a lunch planned, and.
Of course, to me, the most useful one's the budget, where we sit down every year, go line by line what they do, hear about what they did last year, what the challenges are, that, that of course is the most.
Yeah, yeah.
Ruthful one.
Yeah, well, and if there's anything even remotely approaching a challenge, the five of you know about that.
Yeah.
Just a question, so I have no idea what you usually discuss, having commissioners there, does that?
Yeah.
Does that limit the conversation at all, do you think?
It'll be a different kind of meeting. When I meet with department heads, typically, it is to discuss operations. That will not be what this meeting is. This will be just a status update. We will have to notice it up to the public because it is a meeting where conceivably a quorum could show up, and it'll just, I mean, the public could come receive the same update. And I've let the team know, this is more for the department heads and electeds that you don't hear from super often, registrar of deeds, appraiser, some of those, so. Last thing, and Paul may talk about this, but just industry luncheons on Friday, right? And that's at Welsville High School?
Yep.
Okay, okay. And that's, that's all I have.
Paul, do you have anything else? Nothing today? All right, Sheriff.
Good morning. I'll just give you a quick update on our Faith in Blue weekend that just concluded. We had events Saturday morning, and then Sunday morning and Sunday night, and they were pretty well attended. We had a lot of good support, and we just appreciate the support that we have, the partnerships with the faith community and, and the public. I think there was around, there was about 200 people that showed up to the event on Sunday evening, which was pretty good considering that there was a football game on TV that had a lot of interest at the same time. So, so we were pleased with that, but again, it was just indicative of the, of the support and the partnerships that we have here in Franklin County, and so we, we appreciate that on an ongoing basis, and that's really all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
I, I tended that, I was going to make a mention, I, and I love the fact that it's Faith in Blue, you, you know, the religious community and, and the first responders come together. I, sometimes though, I always think it should be Faith in Blue, because I definitely have a faith in Blue. No, I have faith that when I call, you're going to show up, and, and when you show up, you're going to be, treat me fairly, no matter the color of my skin or whoever, whoever I am, whether I'm living out of my car or living in a mansion. So I, I do have definitely a faith in Blue. I also found out that Riley Rivers has a serious sense of humor. I didn't ever, I never experienced that before, so he represented our county well.
He did, he did, he did a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Chrissy, do you have anything else for us this morning?
I, I just wanted to let you know that at the end of August, we successfully concluded our in-house advanced EMT class, and in September, one of the, the first of our employees was able to successfully pass all of the required testing to obtain his certification. So out of that, we have now gotten one onboard, and we still have three that are waiting to complete the testing process, but things are looking well for those, so it was a successful class. Also, just letting you know that in 2024, 2023, we did try to push out some more public education, particularly dealing with CPR and educating the public. I get to go on COFO tomorrow morning, so I'm going to talk more about that, but in 2024, we're going to add a fall prevention program as well.
And will Abby teach that as well?
She will. We're going to send her, KU actually offers the training for it, it's called Matter of Balance, and she will be going through that, I believe, along with a representative from the Health Department, so that they can co-teach the class together. It's aimed at individuals 60 and over.
It's, it's not often that individual employee names reach my desk for a good reason, but Abby's has.
Yes.
So she's, she's doing a real good job.
Yes.
A good ambassador for the county, for sure.
He is, yes.
Welsville continues to come along, does it not?
Welsville isn't going along much faster than anticipated, and there is the anticipated hope that we will be in actually by the end of the year.
Oh, wow.
Joanna's, and I think, Don, you've seen this, and I know you and I have helped her with it, she's about, we're about to release an article on it that's very good, that I'm excited to put out there for the public to consume, a lot of good pictures, that's, that project is going so fast.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'm excited for your crews.
Yes, me too.
I think there's another, there's a hands-on CPR training for county employees?
There is, we have one in October and then another one in November.
Very cool, yeah, awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are busy, all right. Dustin, anything? All right, we'll move on to David Lee.
All right, so last week, we had a, a bridge on John Brown Road, just east of Montana. It's a bridge that we've kind of had our eye on, but over the last couple of weeks, the pavement next to the abutment has fallen, and it's, it was three inches or better right there. And so we, we consulted with our bridge engineers, and they recommended that we dig that out and place some flowable fill, so that's exactly what we did on both sides. We dug out about eight feet on both sides, clear across the roadway, put flowable fill down in that up to a certain level, and then we've compacted material on top of that. When we were digging down, the, the soil was extremely soft and fluffy almost, so there was nothing.
No moisture?
No moisture.
No binder?
Nothing.
So it wasn't erosion this time of year, so it leaves?
Yeah, and, and in addition to that, there were lots of, you could see where animals had been burrowing in under those, which is not an uncommon thing that occurs, but in this case, on both sides of the bridge abutment, it was causing some issues. So we, we were hoping to open the road today. We're not putting a final lift of the asphalt on top of it. We think there's going to be a little bit more settling that occurs, but we're going to put some work zone signage up to reduce the speed limit and, and make folks aware that that's occurring. One of the considerations of, of holding off on, on applying the asphalt, we have a similar situation occurring on Cloud Road between Texas and Tennessee, very similar situation, we're going to do the same thing to that. That bridge, hopefully, starting this week yet, but as soon as we get both of those, get the flowable fill in, get it compacted, we'll come back and, and put asphalt on, on both of those bridges to make that a smooth transition and, and safe. We don't want the road falling away as somebody's driving through there. So both of those projects have kind of popped up on us, but I think the, the folks have done a great job of getting it repaired, and, and even with the gravel, it's going to be a lot better than what they're having to drive over before. Next Tuesday, right here in the commission chambers, we'll have the bid opening for Old 50. We have, I'm aware of three different contractors that have the, have the plans. We've been fielding some phone calls from those contractors asking questions, but really anxious to, to open the bids and see what we're going to be dealing with next week. And finally, a few weeks ago, I mentioned KDOT is holding these local consult meetings, their listening sessions for, for KDOT. It's an opportunity for them to tell us about their transportation plan, give us an update on that. They will also run through projects that are happening in this KDOT district, and then there will be breakout sessions where they divide the group up into smaller groups, and we have the opportunity to listen to others, but also provide input on things that we feel are, is important. And then they report all that back out to the larger group, and ultimately, they will have a, once they get done with all of the districts, they will provide information on that as well. So I'm, I'm headed down, it's in Iola, starts at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. I plan to attend, if any of you would like to ride with me. You're more than welcome to attend and see what it's all about. Anybody interested?
Yeah, I, I wish I could, and I guess I, I had it on my calendar, but I have another obligation.
Hate to say where I'm going to go, I got to go to prison tomorrow. Hey, we're delivering bikes through the, not the bike program, land thing, so.
Probably not. All right. I'm interested, but probably not. Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll shoulder the load for you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Janet. All right. Commissioner reports then.
Like, like I said, tomorrow, we'll be going, it's the Friday.
Oh, you said tomorrow.
I don't go till Friday, I'll talk to you later. They, we had a RTD meeting yesterday, want to thank Paul and Christine from Tourism. We put together a tourism conference type deal and invited people here from five different counties, and we had in the state director and the person that writes the grant. So, and they said, very often they ever get invited to anything like that, where they could talk to a group in person instead of just individuals, so they got, I thought maybe 30, 45 minutes, but after an hour and 15 minutes, I had to shut it off because it would just, maybe it's something we can continue on another basis, later on, but tons of questions. I mean, like Christine said in the beginning, we couldn't hardly get a question out to anybody, but once this question started, and the discussion started about the funding and the money is there, and how to get it, and she went through a presentation slide that showed all the different, different grants and what's available, and how to apply for them, and where the, those are things you just kind of hear about, but you don't hear straight from the amount of people that's doing it. And it sounds like state of Kansas, in the last three years, it sounds like, has really come forward with money, but towards, towards that. And she brought up the same thing on the memorial deal, I mean, that might be something like that. Nobody long time hasn't considered it, an attraction to bring people, not much attraction, but attraction for, for education of the people that are, you know, that's something, maybe something, you know, they, they, they have to do pretty wide, the only thing, first thing I think of education on, they won't go for, 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 for extensive, existing, they won't, for maintenance and other things, that's something that's over there. But like I said, it was, we had like nice people, and they, and everyone, I did get a way around, like, run up, they had, they had, they were, and they, they were cutting, and then, uh, pretty much, uh, school up there, with a big politician there, and, you know, and I don't do you, Justin, you don't tell much, you know, all the time, you know, inside, you know, this, 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 and, and just all, the, 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 we have, after, you know, so, I like to, not only, but they have, you know, like, all the time, you know, that, 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 that.
Cool, all right.
Nick mining sent me a letter on Richmond Museum, putting together an event on October 29th at 2:00, and it'll be over in the history of Central Heights.
Oh, that'd be cool.
That's it.
All right, anything for you?
There'll be an agency on aging meeting tomorrow, that's my excuse.
Um, Paul, on my calendar, I have an FCDC executive meeting tomorrow morning. Do, is that, yes, okay. I went to a chamber, a couple of us went to the Chamber Coffee at Frontera's on Friday to celebrate their one-year anniversary, very well attended, because they had a breakfast buffet, I guess, but anyway, it was a nice, it's hard to believe that they've been there a whole year. Went to the Faith in Blue. Monday, I went to the Franklin County Community Outlet Conference at OU, a lot of numbers. Those economists talk really fast, throw a lot at you, but I, there was a couple of things that I really, that really stood out, and I haven't been able to get through everything that they handed out yet, but, and then I don't think they realized it was actually a holiday at the, on the university yesterday, so there weren't a lot of people there, but it was a lot of good information. And then I had the chamber board meeting yesterday morning. Yesterday afternoon, Commissioner Harris represented us at the reopening of the auditorium. So I, from what I've heard and the pictures I've seen, that's pretty awesome.
I thought you were there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, pretty, pretty awesome what they've done there, so, a lot of things still coming forward, and, but I think for today, that should take care of it, so, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, okay.
All right.